So, your pickup.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming this morning to our work session. We will begin with Commissioner Pate with the invocation and Commissioner Acock following with the pledge of allegiance.
Let's power heads. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, God our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, and port your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may be reached a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today and cross, we pray, amen.
Standing, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, commissioners all being here this morning. Are there any comments from the commissioners before we begin our work session on expenditures? Mr. Kumari?
No, sir. Was there any comment for later?
Mr. Pate?
None at this time.
Mr. Acock?
None, sir.
Mr. Dodgery?
None at this time.
Mr. Bailey?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayo?
None at this time.
Okay, well, let's begin. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you want to add before we get into this?
There is one thing before and really does deal with budget. And Board and I were talking prior to beginning this morning, and it was legislative bulletin most of you received. This is county seat restoration, protection of lottery funds in the House budget. And the Association of County Commissioners were requesting that Board of Commissioners contact legislators to protect that. And not to be presumptuous, but I was wondering if the Board would consider some sort of action in a letter to follow up with the chair's signature today, asking for this help and support by motion, because it, and as well as call legislators, because this sounds very serious.
Yes, it is. I got the information.
You saw that, you got the amendments.
Got the information at the end of the week. And if we would, if you'll note that, please, when we call under schools today for expenditures, we'll go into lottery funds and sales tax receipts. And at that time, we'll bring them up during discussion. There may be something that we want to add to a resolution, depending on what we come up with in our, that line item on schools.
Okay.
Which will, if we move through this, I'm anticipating that being the last item that we will discuss today. And it may be right after lunch before we get into that. Anything comes up between now and lunchtime, if you get it through the Internet, we certainly will add to it and give us time.
We'll be watching to, to see if anything's coming up. Okay?
Thank you. If not, we will begin, if there's not anything else, we'll begin under expenditures in your book. The first item is the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Smith, we'll let you sort of lead us through this.
Okay. Well, and I'm not sure how you want to go through the expenditures. There may be, as you go through, you may see some major items that, you know, jump out at you that you want to question, or you have inquiry over. But I do want to, this is a general comment about the Board of Commissioners budget. The increases that you see are not necessarily an increase, they're an increase over last year in that I did not have a, I had a board member in the last couple of years that did not receive certain expenses. So, as the Board has fully paid these expenses, it pushes that back up. So, it's not that there's been a major change, it says I have all full board expenses there. Is there any questions about the Board of Commissioners? You'll see that change like in line item 170, places like 183. Now, I do want to mention on 190, professional services, that is part of potential studies, but also municipal code where we do codification. We do some updates with your online ordinances, and we do have some dollars in there this year to, because you have had some ordinances changes, so we need to do that this year. And this is typically where we include that. 312, travel allowance, that is again, the board member from the past. You will see in 510, under capital outlay, this is some improvements in this room. We have actually taken that out of this department, and we have placed that somewhere else in the budget because we need to do some, if you watch television, the lighting is awful, the sound is not good. So, we are going to make upgrades, but we have that established somewhere else in the budget to do that. So, we've actually placed it somewhere else to take care of that. But, any questions about Board of Commissioners budget, or you'd like to go over?
Mr. Dodgery?
Well, you know, we've asked all the departments basically to come in lean and mean this year, and I think we need to do that with our budget as well. That being said, I'd like to know whether or not we can cut professional services 190 to 20,000 versus five, cutting 5,000 out of that. Can we cut that line item by 5,000?
You could, because some of it, I would tell you about 5 or 10, well, 8 to 10,000 of it really is speculation on my part of potential studies or someone that you may bring in. I was just trying to predict, as you're going through this year, you've talked about having.
Correct.
Some things. So, I would say yes.
Well, I'd like to cut five there. And also, under program supplies, and I'm looking, and here's my comparison, so everybody knows where I'm going. I'm looking at actual in 11, actual in 12, and then going to the actual for this year, which is at 66%, if I'm understanding that correct. Am I correct, Pam?
Yes, sir.
So, so far this year, 66% of the year has gone by, and we've only spent under program supplies, 5799. Now, if you take 5799 and divide that back through at 66%, that should extend that for the entire year. That's kind of my theory here.
Where are we right now at 231?
I'm sorry, 231, yeah.
At 231. Where presently, because I know Cindy manages this line item for us, and she's not here today. But, I want to make sure because there are items that we pay for out of this going in the end of the year that may push that number up, so.
And that's true, and that's the unknown.
7,700.
Yeah, 7,700 now. So, you know, we've got 11,000 there, and I think we're at 77. You know, going to 9, I was hoping to cut 2,000 out of that line item. That would put us at 9,000 versus 11,000. And then, the big one that I want to discuss is the travel, meals and lodging and the travel allowance. Those amounts, in my mind, I think our Board needs to consider sending representatives to these, to these meetings. The chairman, vice chairman can go and, and report back to, to the rest of us. I don't think we all need to go to all of these boards and commission, I mean, all these meetings. And I'm hoping that from, on those two line items, that, and I'll be glad to forego mine if necessary, but we need to trim those budgets back. Those two together amount to approximately 60,000, and I'm hoping to cut 10,000 out of that. And I think we could accomplish that by sending representatives there. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we've got a question.
Okay, we have Mr. Acock, then Mr. Mayo. Are you, did you finish?
Well, I'll stop right there since there seem to be some questions on that line.
I have a question on that.
Okay, Mr. Acock, then Mr. Mayo. Mr. Acock?
Mr. Smith, whatever you've got in the budget for meals, divide it by seven and take one of them off. I don't turn any meal tickets. I tried to break the habit one time and couldn't, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayo?
There's a couple of, there's a couple of conventions and things, though, that we really need to attend. And that's the, that's the NACO meeting up in Washington, DC. They have them all over the country, but we go to that one because it's the closest and it costs less for all of us to go. The other one is, is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We need to be heavily involved in that lobbying group. As you know, all of us counties use to get things put before the legislature. So, those two particular, those two particular events, we don't need to send representatives, all of us need to go to those. There may be some other, there may be some other areas that we could do that, but those, those two, we really need to, all of us need to participate.
Mr. Kumari?
I guess I would probably want to go back, Mr. Chairman, to professional services 190, and just inquire from Mr. Dodgery, since he suggested that, what information do you have that we don't have that would suggest that you would want to cut that one? What information do you have that we don't have that would suggest that you need to cut that one? I mean, this is the county commissioners category, and I have not had any conversation with Mr. Smith or anyone else on the Board about what I thought would have been an excessive amount in professional services. I was just wanting to know, how did you come up with that? Not saying that it may not need to be done, but I have watched politics over time. Sometimes when a Board decides to cut themselves, it's because they want to put themselves in a category of cuts across the board. So, before we get started this morning, I'd just like to know, if someone suggests that a cut needs to be made, then I would like to know some justification for it prior to it being done. As far as travel budget is concerned, I could always catch one of the police cars from Mal Oliver and ride up here, Sheriff, if that was all right, and we could cut some budget there. I know one of your cars comes up, you know, right regular. So, just so that we know that any cuts from any departments, I want to hear from somebody why it's less or more, or if it's flat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kumari. Mr. Dodgery?
Well, I do not have any more information than anyone else here, Mr. Kumari. What I am suggesting is that in looking at, if you look on that line item there, back in 11, there was a total spend there of $4,200 for the entire year. So, it is clear that you can have budgeted amount of less amount. We're not cutting that down to 5,000, we're cutting it from 25, I'm recommending, cutting it from 25 to, down to $20,000. That's, I don't think, an excessive amount, but at the same time, as the county manager has indicated, that is a, a guesstimate in regards to possible professional service. It is not linked to specific professional services at this point.
Except for the municipal code piece, because we know we've got that coming up, and that's probably going to be about 5,000.
But I, I say again, I'm not interested in anyone's opinion about why it ought to be. I want to hear some facts. And I'm not, that's not direct, that's just my open comment about cutting. If, if it's put down here before me, I'm figuring there was some justification for it being down there. If it's going to be cut, I want some similar justification. That's all I'm asking for.
Mr. Kumari, if I might add, this is a expenditure work session. We've done the revenue piece at the other. And I realize that there are four new commissioners, that this is the first time you've seen or worked through county budget, four commissioners. And we have broken it down purposely this early in the game for expenditures, for a whole day of going through this, this, these expenditures. So, with that said, as we go through, it's certainly the pleasure of the Board, but indicate, and of course, the county manager here with his staff are indicating these concerns. They're not cast in stone, other than they're crossed out or noted. And then, of course, version, the next version after we get through with this complete expenditure day, then those will be documented by the staff to Mr. Smith, and he will get those back to us generally after the public hearing. Public hearing will take place, and then we will get something probably back within a work session prior to our voting the last Tuesday of this month. So, so this today, as we're moving through this packet, we can make notes all over. And of course, he can get, we've got today, and county manager can come back this afternoon, or have someone representing that particular department. But this day, the manager has made sure that all departments are on standby for our questioning today. Does that help?
I'll let it stand for the moment. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith, let's go to that last line out of 510, the 205, 940.
Yes.
What was, what was that moved to?
We actually put that in.
The cable fund.
Yeah, the cable fund, which is specific, we talked about those dollars, so we're actually hitting those dollars, which is an appropriate use of cable dollars for this. So, we moved it out, and we have placed it in that area under the cable fund to take care of the improvements here, the back room, connect it live to them, something we've been talking about for the last year.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pate?
On the travel.
Yes.
I kind of, I agree with, Mr. Mayo there, that there are a couple that we do need to attend. But when you come up with these figures, is this based on that we would go to all these national meetings? Is that what you came up with it? Sort of follow what you're asking.
Generally, I tell you what we do. We actually, thank you, Cindy and I actually take a look at, and Marsha, take a look at, what are the potential for NACO, you know, the Washington trip? Maybe if one member goes to the other national conference, a member, we didn't say everybody, but like Washington, preponderance of the Board. NCACC, preponderance of the Board. So, we really say, if everybody did these things, this is a worst-case scenario. Now, if you bring it back, if you look at this year on travel, I think we've already amended this year.
To date, you spent 26,000, or 26,000.
On 311?
Yes.
So, what I'm saying to you is, is I believe you'll spend close to that.
That's pretty close.
Unless you really drop back on how many go, like the Washington trip. If you dropped it back too much, you will not all be able to go on the Washington trip, which is a pretty important trip. I'm not, I'm, I shouldn't have.
How about 312? How much have we spent on 312?
312 is a travel allowance. Where are we on that?
That is always sent to the exact.
Yeah, we'll usually zero out, and that's because of the additional member, you know, because we had a member in previous years who did not receive any travel, any salary fees. So, therefore, I had to add the 1/7 back, and when I did, it pushed that number up. You'll spend that pretty close to 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just as a help for us, Mr. Smith, at some point, I wouldn't mind you giving the entire Board a little bit of a lesson on what travel expenses and worse, you know, which places, is there a distance, or the stipend, or whatever you call it, that we get monthly, is that to be covered, all these things? And it might be just helpful to spell that out, because prior to someone deciding that they don't want something, they may need to think about what they may be getting.
Sure.
And, and if it covers everything.
We could break that down.
I think it might, might be helpful. So, someone might not say, oh, I don't need that. And then, all of a sudden, they decide that they need to go someplace, and it may not be covered. So.
Okay. We can give you, we've got a list of things we're going to be giving you, so sure.
That might be wise.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Kumari. Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Smith, isn't it correct that very few commissioners go to all the conferences during the year? I know I haven't been to one, DC, in the past couple of years.
It's usually.
Go to the state of North Carolina.
Usually, less than half go, on average. And sometimes you'll have, during the, you may have, you know, two or three. And this was accounting for that. This isn't full board. If you did full board, all things, obviously, this wouldn't cover, you know, for all the conferences. So, it's not all board members going.
It's just like the one that's coming up in July. I'm not going to that. I don't know how many people are going.
It's one of the NACO.
NACO conference.
No.
Right now, no one is scheduled.
So, you're automatically going to have a cut, just because of the fact that the commissioners choose themselves not to go and not to attend these. But it's good to have it in the budget. So, if, if there's a reason to go, then it's, then it's available.
Because in the year, some of you may get appointed in the past, and some of you do sit on state and national committees. And if you go to those, obviously, if you're on the committee, you gotta go to the meeting. So, I try to account for somebody going, just in case, because I don't want to, you know, you can always amend the budget, but obviously, try to have it as true a picture as you can, so.
Any others? And again, to reiterate, Mr. Smith, we are privy through the year to amend budgets, to get together, decide on whether or not we want to fund the project that we're, we're interested in at that particular time, though it may not be on the budget. Mr. Dodgery?
We go to line item 231, program supplies, actual 8819 for 11, 12 was 7,121. We've indicated actual for this year at 5,700, and yet that budget line item is 11,000. And I wish to cut that down by 2,000 to 9,000. Again, if, you know, I think we need to look at our own budget in our department and make sure that we make cuts appropriately that we're asking other departments to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dodgery. Any other comments on Board of Commissioners expenses?
I'd just like to make one comment, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dodgery keep referring that "we." I haven't had the privilege of sitting in on any budget meeting at where I've asked anybody to make any cuts. So, I don't know where, I'm like Mr. Kumari now, where's he getting this from?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dodgery?
When I referred to "we," I was talking about this Board, "we."
Well, that's what I'm just saying.
Well, I just said.
We haven't discussed any of the cuts yet. I haven't been privileged to.
Well, my line is, I just think that "we," this Board, needs to look at our department and make cuts appropriately, anywhere we can.
Thank you, Mr. Dodgery.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayo?
Mr. Smith, what are program supplies? What does that include?
You can help me on that one. Program supplies are going to be, you have a listing, Janice, under the line item. See, I don't have Cindy here today, but it's going to be anything they do for you guys on printing materials we have to purchase, program supplies for meetings, you know, because we do a lot of meetings with Board, and that's where we take the money out of. And then, many times, what'll happen, I know this year, with all due respect, in some areas, you, you might run out, and then we go over to my budget, and we start taking out of that one. So, we try to, you know, so I'm kind of speculating on work sessions we talked about doing. Do we bring in a guest? You know, do I pay expenses on it?
What's the year-to-date figure?
18,900. I'm sorry, 5,000.
Yeah.
Is that figure correct, 5799?
No.
7,000, I just quoted.
Okay, 7,000.
Over 7, and you're going to have some this month, I know.
Okay.
For instance, like when you did the health impact meeting, and we picked that up, those kind of things. So, as we've talked about, again, and you're right, I'm kind of speculating as year goes on, but as you're wanting to do these studies or committees and work sessions, I've tried to, again, it's pure speculation on my part of what the expense might be, because I've got to have a lot of it to pay for, and, you know.
I don't have, I don't have a problem, Mr. Chairman, with line item 190, that Mr. Dodgery has, has suggested we bring it back to 20,000. And also, professional services, we should be able to drop that to 9,000. That does not, that does not hamper us in any way as commissioners from get, going to these conferences and being educated as much as we can while we're commissioners. So.
Okay, just make note of that.
I support, I support that.
Okay, just make note of that. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dodgery?
As we go through this budget, and how are we as a Board to arrive, do we need to make motions in regards to amendments of the budget?
Yes, sir.
Or are we just going to recommend? How are we going to go for it?
Proper procedure is to, this is a work session. You take each item, you make notes, and you give it back to the manager. He puts it in with his staff and comes back with us at another work session. Or, of course, if it comes to us as a whole, and you wish to make amendments in reference to this, you're certainly able to do that.
At a later meeting?
Yes, sir.
Very well.
And we can. And we have a public, well, a comment, a public hearing on this at 9:30 Tuesday week. And certainly, you're privy to have a work session after that meeting, which will be next Tuesday, to cover any of these items. But we're in positions today as strictly work sessions to, to get through and make note of these.
I understand. But how is the, the county manager to arrive at a conclusion of the consensus of the Board unless we direct him specifically to make those cuts?
That's what you're doing today. You're noting these, you're, you're asking him specifically on these line items to make these adjustments. He takes them back and brings them back before us after the work session, through a work, after the public hearing, through a work session, and into our meeting on the, the last Tuesday of the month, which is what date? 25th. The 25th. And of course, that is at 9 o'clock, and you don't have to vote on this until 10 o'clock that night. It's just that it'd be nice to be voted on that day, and you've got all day to work on it.
Can I inquire on, Mr. Smith, are you comfortable with that? Or would you like more direction?
Yes, well, the one thing that I, I like having, as, as the chairman stated, a little bit of flexibility in that. When you go through a line item and say, I would, we feel as a Board, it would be great to cut X out of that line item. I may go back and find out, can't, that's a insurance premium, and it's 100%, therefore, I can't cut that. Gives us a little bit of flexibility over the next two weeks to come back and say, can't quite do that, but could do X. And come out almost like a second recommendation, even, I mean, because it's work, it's just work sessions. So, I mean, yes, I mean, and I'm kind of looking, as you're talking about, to see is, you know, do I have some of this, or do I have some of this? So, I'm really trying to read poker faces here now, as I was telling.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, answer.
Mr. Kumari? I was just trying to reflect on what information I have gathered prior to this meeting. I know we had a series of the departments coming through back six, eight weeks ago. And then, I came back for wages, a meeting with wages, and for the library, I was already out of town before there was a session in there. So, I'm wondering if there's a balance of information that all the commissioners have at this point, because otherwise, we're going to, there'll be a lot of questions that will have to be asked. And I just wanted to make sure that we were all privy to the same information as we go through each one of these. Like I say, after we had that round robin of everybody coming through, I came back to wages one day and was not able to get back to the library session. So, some of this will be, so, this will be the first conversation that we've had as a group about this. So, I guess there's going to have to be patience on the part of everyone, because there are questions that we don't want to ask, and information to be shared before we can make a, before we can have a legitimate vote about anything in here. So.
Yes, sir.
It's going.
Thank you, Mr. Kumari. Any other comments, suggestions on the Board of Commissioners expenses? Okay, I have, I have my comments now and questions. These, this tab, you do not indicate what the commissioners are getting paid. Where is that located?
It's in 170.
Where is that?
Top page.
It's in 170 under the line item.
4110 here.
That's actually what you're being paid.
Board member expenses. So, as we look through the 59,844, two years ago, and then last year, it was at 62,000. And then.
Yeah, that also includes the $50 extra from.
That's what I was getting to.
Yes, it's both that salary type, but that's probably not the work, and then the $50.
For those of those, for those of, who do not know, the commissioners are getting paid a specific amount of money each year, where the chairman gets approximately, what's it, 800? it $800 or so much more than the others?
Yes.
I'm not exactly sure.
A few dollars more than the other.
But the expenses here under this, somewhere, give me a about, please, about what the commissioners make a year gross.
Nine thousand six hundred in salary.
Nine thousand six hundred dollars in salary, and that's indicating the 69,516. I would like to suggest that we cut that by 15 percent. All of us are retired, and I know there's a lot of us spend a lot of time on this, and we get $50 extra when we get all together for these committees. But I would like to recommend and suggest that we cut that 15 percent. What's 15 percent of 69,000?
About 15 hundred.
$1500 each?
Yes.
Okay. That's about a little, about $100 a month?
Hundred and ten to hundred and fifteen, something like that.
And the reason I, fellow commissioners, the reason I say that is because we are, as one commissioner has already mentioned, we're asking that we go lean and mean this year, and we cut back. And we can only cut back as, as much as, as we can, but we, we need to take a seat on this as commissioners. That's my suggestion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kamardi?
I guess I'd like to ask the ignorant question right here. The, the 9600 that you alluded to, does, and then I see the separate travel line item. The 9600, does that cover all the travel throughout North Carolina?
Well, you've got the salary portion, which is the 9600, then you have the travel allowance. That's a separate, that's, those are separate dollars.
But come, it all comes in the.
Same check.
The little check that we get.
Deposit. Yeah, but there are different.
Categories there.
Including the $50 per meeting, the 9600 divided by 12, less taxes, that type thing, and then the travel piece.
Mm-hmm. Because I was just, I wanted to be clear that those, you know, certain things were taken care of in that, that we, that you do send us every, every month. And therefore, it would make it more likely that you could cut travel if you, if that wasn't, you know, if those things were separated out. Because I have relied on whatever the areas that you send us every month to do all the traveling that I've done within North Carolina. So there may be some fat in here someplace, but I would not want it to be misunderstood that it was. And they might mean that, they might be a little less, since there's so many of us knew.
Well, one of the.
A little bit of a lesson to, to, to make sure that what the line items are specifically for, because it's very general in this category. So I, I'm not saying there's not areas to be cut, but I would want us to be educated in this line item as we should be in all the other line items. That's my point.
Mr. Kamardi, my, my recommendation was to, was to cut 15 percent out of our, out of our gross, which includes matching social security, Medicare benefits that we get, insurance, assistance, and so forth. There's, and it's in your first page. Social security, it went from 7,800 to 9,600. Social security, Medicare went from 1,800 to 2,200. Hospitalization contributions is 39,000. It went up to 48,000. Employee assistance program, it went up $105. Workers' comp went up from 3,000 to 3,800 dollars. I've not totaled all of that up, but it is in excess of nearly $160,000. And with that said, I'm, I'm sorry, 69, 10, 100 versus?
Hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty thousand. Now, of course, when we go on these trips, the, the fuel is reimbursed. If you take a trip, then you, you put down your, your ticket, your receipt, and you turn those in to the office, and they're, they're refunded to you. And I, I'm just asking that we take the lead as commissioners, that we are one of the best-paid commissioners in the state, that I've looked at all of what commissioners are paid, and Wayne County pays theirs handsomely. And I just, I think that 15 percent cut is, is not too much to ask of the commissioners to move in that direction in order to set the example.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Maye.
And, and I agree with that, but it also should be noted that the commissioners overall, I don't know of a single one that has turned in very much as far as mileage is concerned. We are diligent with the taxpayer dollars, because we are taking a lot of these expenses and not turning them in. So I'm in favor, I'm in favor of the adjustment of the 15 percent. But keep in mind, we are, we are diligent in spending the taxpayers' dollars, and we will continue to do that even with the 15 percent cut, I think, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maye. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dottery?
I would withdraw my cuts in regards to 311 and 312, and concur with the 15 percent cut on the board expenses.
Just make note of that, please, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Akon.
Yes, sir. I, I think, clarify me on this if I'm wrong, but, you know, 15 percent cut, excuse me, is not only gonna be that first line item. I mean, everything that's tied into that first item will, all, all of them will be basically cut 15 percent.
That's correct.
So we're really looking at the bigger picture, and, and I'm in agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Akon. Mr. Kamardi?
I'd like to ask the county manager, not, I mean, not this moment, not in this session, but just maybe to give us a, a little more of a lesson as to specifically what the particular line items of our budget should be for and that kind of thing. Because I just share just a little bit of the need to cut, and I agree with that, if that's what the prevailing premise is. But I would want it to be some better explanation than what we're dealing with this morning, because just around robbing businesses and saying, cut this and cut that, I just wonder whether or not we're doing it the way that it ought to be done, because it might actually need to be leaner than what we're just throwing back and forth of here. So it might be just a little bit of a lesson to all of us, exactly what trips, or what actions, or what expenditure should come out of what line item. Are they being used? And, you know, we might not, not just be talking about 15 percent, we could be talking about 20 or 25 percent if it was appropriate. But it might need to be a, more of a detailed explanation as to what they specifically need to be for, and how we might just really lean them on back, if that's what, if that's the prevailing that I hear that every other department may be asked to do, is leaning on back. So we might need a little bit of a lesson, Mr. Smith, before we, you know, say we'll, we'll do this one or we'll withdraw that one. Let's have a little bit of a lesson as to what they specifically need to be used for, how we might cut maybe more of that back, or does it need to be cut. But let's, let's get a little lesson on it first.
Thank you, Mr. Kamardi.
Thanks, sir.
Any others? And now that that's finished, then we'll move to the next tab, which is dues. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. First, if you just look at, is there any questions about these you have submitted to the government, East Carolina Council, and Chamber of Commerce?
Mr. Kamardi?
I'm sorry. Mr. Dottery? Apologize. I thought I saw your name.
Mr. Dottery?
Mr. Smith, I think we agreed when we located that that 22,500 to the chamber was an error.
Yeah, what was our conclusion on the Janus for Pam? We had, because we talked about it as a staff, and.
We took, um, we took, we took 22,500 out. It's already out.
It's already out.
Yeah, we've already deleted.
All right, so we're gonna delete 22,500.
Yeah, because we've got another line item, the actual dues. What were they, like 18?
We took that 15, but these.
15,000.
Already been done, the budget you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was just an error.
We've already made the cut in the recommendation. Yeah.
Okay.
But the 13, 732, the 40, 45 stand.
So you said you already made, you already made the cut in the recommendation. This is your recommendation, what we're looking at.
Yes.
You're gonna take 20, 22,500.
We found that an error, basically. It, and, and we've already, so we have deleted that. But if you look at the bottom line that I gave you of the cuts of 1 million.
100.
Whatever, 161,000, that's already accounted for, because we did that very last minute. So we didn't rerun books.
It's already part of, I mean, already been.
We've already cut.
Okay.
Okay.
So some, I'm sorry, we may hit some of those, and we'll just note them as you get to them, because there have been some, there can be arrows. I'm sorry to say, there can be.
Okay, any other questions on dues? Okay, let's turn to the next tab, Chamber of Commerce.
There it is. There's the Chamber of Commerce. They have the, I think we had, did we go ahead and put the 15 in?
15's in.
15 in. Now, 18 was an additional 3,000, their request, and we've left it at 15,000.
Okay.
At the, at the, what we had paid before. Same with the, now, the Chamber, Mount Olive, they had asked, I guess they asked for a $100 additional. That took it to 900s versus the 800. Did you want to leave it at the original amount?
Any, any, any questions, comments, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dottery?
If we're going to keep the same dues for the county, I think we need to keep.
Page six, under.
He's just missing in his.
Not missing?
That's all right.
He can look on this.
Okay, one, okay. One is 15,000, the first Chamber of Commerce, and then there's Mount Olive Chamber, you know, and I, and I think I hear where you're going, they've leave them at the.
I think we need to leave that at the 800 that it was last year.
Okay. So noted. Got it.
You're leaving it at eight?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Next tab, county manager.
Sees, let's go with that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got some questions.
This is the one we can really work on.
All right. Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pate?
Just go on the first line, 121. What's all in that? Is that?
That is Marsha, Cindy, and myself.
Okay.
Those 40 of us. That's correct.
It's not Pat? I was hoping that's what you.
Uh, Pat falls under central services.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait one second.
Isn't that right? We let, that's under central services, under the mail area, and that's where Dexter and Pat are in one department. Yeah.
Central services?
Mm-hmm. Yes. And you'll see, when we get central services, it changed, because we did a public affairs department. We took Barbara and Wayne out, moved them into a separate department this year.
Okay. All right, Mr. Dottery?
I'm noting that that is an increase of 40,000 on that line item. Is there any reason why that has jumped up from up 40,000 on that top, 121?
Mm-hmm. Some of that is an apportionment of my contract, which is an annual contract, and what else, Chance, you and I talked about that. What was the other big difference other than my contract?
The contract, I think.
It's just contract amounts. And some of it from last year.
Contract amount wasn't gone up 40,000.
Depends on 401K, and it depends on the raises.
Yeah, because all that's included in the contract, so that pushes that line item up. And they actually submit those the way the contract's set up. You give additional 401K and those type things to me as you pay an apportionment of my 401K part of the contract. So that actually pushes that line item up. But I also believe from last year to this year, there's some adjustment from last year to this year, because if you remember, you had to amend the budget this year.
Correct.
Because it was off, like 20,000. It was wrong.
This, the dollars and the costs that you're looking at came out of February 1. You did an amendment that brought that, the current year budget up. So this does not reflect that amendment.
So it would only be about 20,000, not that that makes you feel any better, but it goes up 20 instead of 40, if that makes sense, because you had to amend it because it was wrong from last year. It did not get included when the transfer took place last year.
Can I inquire, then, take your, take your own medicine here. Where could we possibly find about $10,000 here?
In that line item?
No, no, not in that line item, in that department.
I don't know. I'm your fallback. When you guys run out, you come get it from me.
Well, now, we cut our hours, so we're just asking.
Um, well, you'll look, there were some areas that we, I'm looking at the second page, some of those are pretty lean as far as, we keep our.
Are you asking for the whole department, or just that particular line item, 121?
I think I'm just looking at the department.
No, no, for the whole, anywhere in that. It's his department, so anywhere in that department. I mean, most of this is salaries, wages, benefits, travel allowance by contract.
We don't have a lot.
Hospitalization, you can't cut that. I mean, I.
The telephone is, that's pretty much.
You took the riddle of the copier out, telephone postage, I mean, dues and subscriptions, I mean, you know, you've got that down.
Yeah, and that's with Marsha and Cindy and I with our, I mean, we, we keep it pretty lean. We don't have, it's salaries.
What I'm saying is, I couldn't find it. Can you find it?
I don't have another $10. And I will tell you, if I had it in here, I'd give it to you right now. And Cindy and Marsha are both, I mean, going, where are you gonna get it? Because we try to run it pretty lean on all the other areas in our department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dottery. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners in reference to the county manager, Mr. Pate?
What question? Let dues and subscriptions?
Yes.
That's a pretty big drop there. What was raised?
Well, that was the, that was the chamber, was it the 20?
That's right.
That was a chamber that was, used to be in, and I never have, why was it in our department? It, it came over and really should not have been there. And that was part of that 25, remember, we looked at it in some of our meetings, said, that's a mistake, that shouldn't be there. So we actually pulled it out. And then we've got other dues and subscription. I have like the City County Managers Association, ICMA, which is a national association, and the Clerks Association.
Okay.
Because Marsha does her master clerk's training, comes out of my department.
Any comments?
I have some. The line item that Mr. Pate just brought up, dues and subscriptions, when he goes from $4,000 in 2010 and 11 up to 22,000, I'm really amazed that the previous board didn't pull that out and question that, if it was in there by accident. But you got actual year-to-date, you've got 24,375, and you've got four months to go in the year. So, you know, someone has brought in 24,375 as an expense, but you've dropped it back to 52,90. You know, my, my concern is that, you know, if it is that way in 10 and 11, and then in 11, 12, it's picked up at 22,8, and you're at 24,3, and all of a sudden, you're seeing, well, it was a mistake, we got four months to go, and then you're back down to 55,200 on that particular line item. I had questioned that too, Mr. Pate.
But what we had done is, is when I say mistake, it really shouldn't have been in this department. It should have been under dues and subscriptions, and not in the candidate, because it's not my membership to the chamber, it's the county's. So we were actually paying it out of this line item, because it had to be paid from somewhere.
Sure.
So all we did was move it out of my department, because it just was not in a perfect place for it to be.
Sure.
But that was, but it was being paid and was not duplicated.
And again, this is one of the areas that the commissioners have sought so hard to do, is make sure that as we do a budget, like we are, Mr. Kamardi, every line item counts, because we want to make sure where every line item is paid out of that particular apartment. And it's called cost shifting whenever you do otherwise. The other question I have on travel allowance, I'd like to see that travel allowance drop down to, to, is there a way that we can bring that down to $10,000?
No, sir.
Instead of 14, 4?
That's a contract amount between myself and the board.
Just, just a comment, that's all. Office supplies from, from 600, and it goes up to 1,800 last year, and all that we've used this year is 294. We've got four months to go, and you're asking for 2,250. Can we drop that line out to $1,000?
Marsha's send it.
Because we, it's on through February, correct?
Yes. Marsha, I'm managing.
So what is it now?
On these girls in those ears, because they manage those.
Good.
I thought we did. We amended on the board side, or on, in my department, one of the other. We've had them in.
Today, office supplies is at 1,500. I'll look at here, Mr. Maye, please get attention to that. Actually, it was 18, about 19,000 at the end of the year.
I'd, I'd like to see us reduce that by $1,000. Just to note, and the program supplies, like to see a reduction of 250 there. Two years ago, it was 190. Last year, it was 186. This year, zero, up through February. And you've got $1,000. I'd just like to have it cut 250, if that would be possible. Professional services, two years ago, it's 1,500. Last year, it was 2,200. So far this year, actual, no, you've got zero. Got four months to go. So far this year, actual, no, you've got zero, got four months to go. So what is it now, Ms. Holt?
Um, zero.
Zero, you've got three thousand dollars. I'd like you to cut that three thousand dollars down to five hundred dollars.
Cut it by, or cut it to five hundred?
Cut it to five hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's all the comments I have noting those. Any other questions from Commissioners before we move on to the next line?
I'll just ask one question about the professional services. If I'm looking at right, twenty-ten, eleven, it was fifteen hundred, and twenty-eleven, twelve, it was, that you spent, was twenty-two forty-five, is that correct, in professional services?
Yes, sir.
And-
Depends on special projects, things that the board may have done, or we did, you know, we brought in somebody for training, or board training, or either I brought something in for department manager training, I took it out of this line.
So, just looking in front of us, the lean this year was fifteen hundred. And you put, and somewhere in between there, there was twenty-two forty-five, and you're asking for three thousand. I just wonder, what are you going to get for five hundred dollars? I mean, if you went back to anything, unless I'm missing something now. The leanest thing that we're looking at here is fifteen hundred. And, uh, if we went back to five hundred, that would be a thousand less than the least that you spent in twenty-ten. And I'm just wondering, what, I mean, without knowing every X and O, and I know, don't pretend to, but I'm just looking at the leanest year here versus the three thousand that you're asking for, versus the twenty-two forty-five that you spent. Uh, I, I'm just curious as to-
Well, since I suggested it, Mr. Komarty, I'll give you my reasoning.
Please do.
Okay, if you'll say year-to-date, actual twelve, thirteen, there's zero there. And I've asked the staff, what is it, that's through February, year-to-date, and I've asked for this month, and she's just told me zero. We've only got two weeks to go before the year-end. And I've asked to take the manager's recommendation and cut that to five hundred dollars from three thousand. And knowing that, if there's an emergency, or that they need something here in the next two months, five months, eight months, they can come back to us for a budget amendment. I'm just trying to be realistic, and, and what these figures are, and, and looking at a real budget, and I'm using trends.
And that's what I was looking at too, when I looked at the fifteen hundred. If you look across there, you are trending, and the trend to five, to five hundred dollars to me, will be trending lower than anything's been done before. That's what I'm looking at, but I stand as a junior on this board, but not first time I looked at line items, budgets. So I, I still say that to go to five hundred versus the fifteen hundred, the leanest year here, I'm just wondering if, uh, five hundred, you're not cutting the fat, but also the lean. And I just say that as we get ready to go through all of them. Those are the kind of things that I'm looking for, we're talking about trends. I'm sort of looking at the lowest year I see versus the highest year I see, and looking for somewhere in the middle, not below the leanest year. Because professional service is only as good as the person who takes care, uh, sees professional service. And that's what makes us all good at what we do, is to be professionally up to date now. And I'm not just saying that for this department, I'm talking about for all the departments, because I believe in seeing folk up to date, staff development, and all that. It's just my history with the school system, we do delve in, staying up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Komarty. Thank you, Mr. Komarty. My history as a businessperson, a professional service is a vague line item. Anything can fall under that, if you ask somebody to do something for you, and you can always put it there. The, the, I guess, second part is, if, if we may, since Ms. Holt is here, we'll move back to, since I've been on the board since oh-eight, we can look at oh-eight, oh-nine, nine, and ten.
I'll just bring it on.
Yes, ma'am.
Eleven, twelve, twenty-two, two-
I'm sorry, oh-eight, oh-nine, or do you go into nine, ten? Because we have ten and eleven.
I'll give you the history for years past. One thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars, one thousand two hundred and nine-six dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, and twenty-two forty-five.
Twenty-two, forty, twenty-two hundred?
Two thousand and then forty-five dollars.
Yes, that would be eleven, twelve. Prior to that's fifteen, prior to that, it's, okay, two thou, nine and ten would be twelve thousand ninety dollars, and oh-eight, oh-nine is sixteen hundred dollars. Being that, as looking at the two years prior to that, Mr. Komarty, oh-eight, oh-nine being sixteen hundred, nine, ten being twelve hundred, and then fifteen hundred in ten and eleven, and twenty-two hundred, I will change my, I will, I will change that from five hundred to a thousand dollars.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. That's just my, my comments on that. Any others, Mr. Daughtry?
I concur with your suggestion.
Thank you.
I got one more question.
Mr. Pate?
You know, talking about those trends that we just heard, why this year did we not spend anything?
It's just a reason. Basically, with department managers, I did not have the department manager meetings, did not have, we just pulled back, because we were on so many projects. So therefore, everything came to a halt.
Okay. Thank you. Public Affairs.
You see, you don't have a history, because we now have created, and I think this is appropriate, Public Affairs, which is Barbara Arson and Wayne Alley. So we moved the expenses over to this department from Central Services. Um, so you can look at Central Services, look at some decreases there, pulled this over, and this is just those two salaries, starting in one twenty-one. Is there any particular questions you have about this area? Because we, we are creating this, for instance, compute- Um, well, now, we're actually pulling them over. We put them over here, too.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Daughtry?
Is there any way we could get Barbara in here to answer some of these questions?
I probably can answer your question.
If arranged out, we can move on there.
Can we move on to another?
We can.
I do have some questions.
If you've got some specific, we can talk about them, but some of this is, there is some speculation on some of the expenses, trying to move to Mac computers because of video, those type things that are in here, and these are new. Because there's some things that we're not quite sure about, on particular with television pieces, we're having to grow it, like some of the audio stuff in here, and, but I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
Well, for you to bring her back here in a little bit, and-
Is that possible?
Is she here today? We'll find out, we'll, we'll do, unless she's, isn't she here? Okay.
She's doing her job, she's in her room.
That's right.
You were listening.
I was monitoring.
She's monitoring.
Monitor.
Ms. Barbara Arson.
Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Daughtry.
New department, no track record, hard, hard to determine these, these are really kind of shooting in the dark here a little bit, I assume, but I'm going to go to Professional Services. The catch-all. One ninety, we are recommending forty-three thousand there.
Okay, I'm going to have to talk to Lee to make sure that this is all moved, because we didn't have a budget. Is this the one we did, the radio?
We did under- Hold on just a second, I want to check one thing before I say that. Just confirm, hold on. Yes, that is radio, that is outside video services, that is, it's kind of an all-inclusive line item.
Okay. Yeah, that's probably better.
Yeah, with, uh, uh, School Wires Upgrades, this is, um, all manages all the websites for the entire county. General upgrades to School Wires are doing that this year at three thousand, regular School Wire contract at four thousand. School Wires is the company, schools did us a really good job, and they actually turned us on to a company that does website management. Very, I mean, it was twenty-five, thirty grand, and we were able to get that down by twenty-five thousand, by using the same company. Um, then we have Jim Hennett and the radio contract.
It's the radio in that, that's why I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's why I was looking to confirm it, but I'm unsure.
How much have you got in there on radio?
We had dropped that to-
Thirty-six thousand. Or the total?
That's the total, but the radio, we dropped down to less than fifteen thousand on that.
And it was thirty some.
And it was thirty.
It was, we've already made the cut there.
Yes, we made a cut to that already. And this is also for additional filming services, when I don't have Wayne or a staff member, we actually bring in Jim Hennett to do that, and he has an hourly rate, and we bring him in, and we try to-
Or after-hours stuff, so we're going to have to get into overtime.
Yeah, because it's cheaper to pay somebody by the hour versus paying an employee and pay overtime, it was cheaper.
How much of a budget have you gone there?
I think we'd looked at, I think for his piece, was about seventy-five hundred to ten thousand dollars is what we were looking at. And it was cheaper than hiring a full-time or a part-time person, because I don't have to pay the benefits. And again, that's some speculation, but those are after-hours, trying to take more meetings, committee meetings, things like the health impact, you know, we're trying to predict, you know, what are those cost?
And if I can just go on, and then, uh, uh, over on line item two sixty-one, how did you arrive at a five thousand dollar estimate on office supplies?
I think we looked back, actually, I think on that one, and looked at the DVDs that we have to-
Modulators. It's the modulators, the lights, actually bringing in a filing cabinet, but we've actually priced those things out, Wayne and Barbara had worked on those. Uh, but your two sixty-one, some of this is some equipment we're buying to actually, for instance, the signal from here to over there. But this is non-capital furniture and equipment. So we actually had separated those line items out, and looked at what we needed to operate. Then when you get into two sixty-two, this is the Vimeo and the MacBook Pro laptop. Um, as I understand, Barbara, the-
Oh, yeah.
We have to have Mac to, and when Jeremy did our videos for us, that has to be done on a Mac, because it has better video quality than what we use. So we did the Vimeo to be, to be able to do that, so this is actually going to Mac for those-
And how many Macs have we purchased?
I'm going to have a laptop, so that I can do editing, video it, and then Wayne's going to have one in the studio, it's a desktop. Because all he's operating on now is a laptop, he doesn't have a desktop.
Yeah, so that was forty-five hundred dollars for the, the Mac, and then the Vimeo, I guess the, the update was six hundred dollars.
So I see you've already gone through and priced this, and that's-
Yes.
Yeah. And actually, we, we have, we're trying to be compatible with what Jeremy can do, because, you know, we're having to farm out so much to him, because we don't have the-
And then on item three seventy, uh, I see you cut that from thirty-seven-five to twenty thousand.
See, I thought that's where the radio was.
Oh, there's the radio. That was the, that's all video, and then the radio, now-
See, I think we were going to cut-
See, but I think we have, we've cut that already.
You cut the radio, um, six thousand dollars.
Yeah, but that's been cut. But, but that's-
It's actually under advertising, is any of the radio under advertising?
Yeah, but under advertising is radio spots and all other areas of advertising, because you may do print advertising. Um, you, you do billboards, you do electronic, the buzz, that's where all this comes out of.
Well, how much on advertising is radio advertising spots?
That was ten to fifteen thousand.
Ten to fifteen thou, is that in the-
Now, that also includes.
Is that in the advertising line item?
Yes, on three seventy. That's the live radio piece, right? That's where I'm denoting the detail right now. Would be there.
Now, if I could just go back-
Yeah.
Over here, where you, over in Professional Services, where earlier you had said that the radio is in there, what, what radio have you got in one ninety?
Is that spots, what is that?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think you have radio in one ninety. I think you have radio down here.
See, I think it's listed here, but it may not.
And I'm not sure what you have over here in one ninety exactly, but it's probably, um, the area for, um-
Is it just that? It can't be just that.
I think it was originally that, and you were going to cut it, after you had your, and I don't guess it got cut.
Did we cut one ninety at all? Is it still sitting at forty-three?
Cut gems down to about ten.
About ten, so you could actually probably cut that. About twenty thousand dollars, because if I look at additional filming services, the upgrades, I could cut that twenty thousand. I would take one ninety by twenty. Yeah, and we thought it had come out, that's why I was looking at it, and I thought we'd cut, but I would, my recommendation would take that forty-three to twenty-three.
Because I think that came out of the budget, though.
Yeah, and, and yeah, I think we did talk about that in the budget conferences.
And then one last item here, and that is, under five twenty-
Yes.
Computers, you've got eleven thousand dollars in that. And you had fifty-one hundred over here on six, I mean, two sixty-two, so you've got a total of sixteen thousand, one hundred dollars there on computers.
That's true. This is the video editing system. First, you had to have the-
Macs.
Now, this is between Barbara and Wayne and IT and Jeremy, this is what they detailed out. And the video editing system is hardware and software, excluding the computer, and the connectors that it takes to do all the video editing to, and that's what it includes, but those are all separate items, those are not duplicated, because they verified those.
Wait, I can explain to you the other.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Daughtry, the, the main PC, the desktop PC that, that Wayne Alley will have, that compute, that is designed and configured to render the video much faster than what they're currently doing, because the number of videos that they're having to edit, the number of videos that they're having to create. Um, the Mac system, the Mac Pro, which is the desktop version, has a lot more processing power, a lot more memory. It's, it's a completely different system than a desktop, it's much more powerful. It allows them to save a lot of time on when they're rendering and creating these videos. Uh, it takes hours to do the videos now.
Is there anywhere on those two line items on computer equipment that we can have a cut? Is there anywhere on those two line items where you've got eleven thousand and sixty, I'm sorry?
You're talking about fifty-one hundred.
About all you could do, if you're going to approve these systems, about all you can do is reduce the configuration to lower the cost. But I wouldn't recommend that, because then you're going to, um, basically change, uh, the speed of which they're going to be rendering, so I wouldn't suggest that.
Well, then going along with Mr. Komarty here, I mean, there's no reason to squirm and make it less efficient. And that's why I ask.
Yes, and that, that price may not be a definitive price, that's one estimate.
Sure.
When we go to get these systems, we're going to have three estimates.
And you could get it cheaper, and Noel will be right down the times, making sure we are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have only one question on line item three twelve, the travel allowance.
Yes.
Is seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars?
That is a travel allowance for Barbara. She actually gets, instead of a vehicle, and having a vehicle, we actually do a travel allowance, a monthly amount of money for travel around in the county. So, you know, because she uses her own vehicle, and she and I basically had an agreement, instead of doing this reimbursement, I would give her a flat amount, that was it, and we did that two, two years ago.
You see, vehicle that we have under capital outlay, that's not, that's not-
That's not part of that.
Okay.
That's, that's travel allowances, and that, that's Wayne, and that would pay for, anything he does would be gas, oil, and tires. And we've purchased the vehicle this year, so gas, oil, and tires, and we've covered that on here. But travel allowance is strictly Barbara's.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pate?
I'm going to go back to that video editing system. I know technology's changed so quickly, how long will this service serve our needs? Now, how soon, I'm going to have to come back in another year and buy something else.
No, no, no. Um, this, the system we're getting should be, should be good for, I would say, at least five or six years. We, we can always upgrade that, that system, add more memory if we needed to, to, to help improve it. But I think it really, because technology moves so fast and rapidly, especially with software, software really dictates your operating systems and what you have to do as far as upgrading, as the operating systems become more and more complicated, more, more task-intensive, then you have to update the hardware to maintain that, that level of, um, performance. So, you know, I, I think the system that we're getting, um, for Wayne Alley, the desktop system should last a good five or six years.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, just going to Finance?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to-
Mr. Daughtry.
In that department, we actually had a, a savings on line item, uh, one ninety, oh, twenty thousand, is that where it's from?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Finance?
Hey, Pam.
You can't see her, but you can hear her.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Daughtry? Mr. Daughtry.
Actually, I have spoken with Pam on this matter. On line item 260, I think we're in agreement that we can cut that by $5,000 down to $12,669.
So you want a final figure to say what? 260, office supplies?
Yes, office supplies.
All right.
As you will note here, on amounts spent so far and so forth, on line item 261, a reduction of $500 down to $1,500 on that line item. On line item 352, line item is at $64,580, a reduction of $5,000 on that to $59,580.
Maintenance and repairs, 352?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay.
On equip. And then the last item is 751 under service charges. And that amount reduced by $10,000 to a line item amount of $15,000.
Any questions, comments on this?
One question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Page.
Why, maybe some repairs, I mean, why are we repairing the cost of this minute?
I think, as I recall, Pam, maybe you can give us an update on it.
I'm not saying it's not needed. I just want to understand it.
Hey, we have, we do run a lot of equipment in the finance office. We have $2,380 on two of our printers. We have, I did have a mislatched equipment here at $1,000, just because of the number of the massive equipment that's there. We have JIMs upgrades in there at $14,000. And we also have our annual JIMs contract that runs our software. So we're running this software for not only the finance office, but the payroll system also at $46,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr.-
Mr. Camardi.
Would Mr. Daughtry remind, given those line items, he said it had been agreed that he would reduce?
All right, we're going to go to 260, office supplies. And that is a reduction of $5,000 down to, that would be the amount shown on budget of $12,669. Got that?
So reducing $5,000 in line 260?
Yeah, we're reducing that by $5,000, bringing that line item down to $12,669. And the one right below that is 261, office supplies, and that has been reduced by $500 down to $1,500. And just for your information, so far this year, they've spent $1,070 on that line item. So that line item now would be $1,500. On the second page here, on 352, line item 352, a reduction of $5,000 on that one down And then the last one would be 751, a reduction of $10,000, and that line item would reflect
And which one of these, you say that you had already talked to her about?
All four of them.
All four of those?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair. Mr. May.
I have a question. Do you feel, you feel comfortable with these figures to the point that, Pam, that you think that we, there's a good possibility we may not have to have a budget amendment? Do you feel that comfortable?
There's only one I feel uncomfortable with.
Which one is that?
And that would be the office supplies. And I'll tell you why. I took a staff of six to a staff of eight, and brought a whole new department underneath that hasn't had office supplies. And we're talking to, and took them about this, her former biggest expenses is copy paper, which is actually very expensive. But I mean, I can, I can definitely run with it this year, and I'll come back to y'all if I need it. I can tell you, it's kind of like Barbara's office. I've, you know, increased, I've increased my staff, my work, you know? So I really don't mention I run the department for a year, everything that's going to happen. But I'm willing to take a cut, and I'll come back if I need it.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about, is that, you know, as commissioner, I want to be realistic, but I don't want to be flooded with budget amendments, because budget amendments does drive our budget up.
That's the only one I feel like I would come back to.
Okay.
And I can't, you know, I, like I said, I have a part of the department, with two extra people for a whole year, so. The finance, a lot runs through finance.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
What else was?
Mr. Camardi.
Just to be comfortable with that department, then you feel like you've had enough discussion, Mr. Daughtry, and some whatever discussion that was, that you're comfortable that you can make it with this, because I hadn't heard this before. So I want to make sure that you don't feel too lean on this.
I, I feel, well, I will work with it. We'll work with it. I can't tell you the office supplies. That is, that's what it takes to run the finance office every single day. And like I said, I'm, we're increasing staff, so I don't really know what's going to cost me to increase the staff on my own office.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. May.
On that particular line item, I would like to recommend that we leave that at $2,000, because I just don't want to see us flooded this coming year with budget amendments. And Pam knows her job. She's confident in what she's doing, and she feels uncomfortable with this line. We need, in my opinion, I'd recommend we move back to $2,000.
It's the 260 that I'm-
260 is what she's concerned about.
I'm talking about 261. It's the 260.
The 260.
Seventeen, six, six, nine.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was thinking about the 261. Wow. What are you thinking that you, are you, is anywhere in between the 17, 669 and $12, 669 that you feel like you will be more comfortable?
I'll tell you history on this. I mean, it jumps around. We do a lot of training for U.S. commissioners, as you can see in the budgets. And we have had, with a staff of six, four years ago, $13,000, $14,000. Three years ago, $12,000. Two years ago, $15,000. And this year, I think we're, well, we, even, believe it or not, this last month is one of our heaviest costs and costs of work, and we're not repaying those bills. So that was with a staff of six. So that's the only reason that is it sitting at 17, 669. We only brought it up $669, but I can't, I really can't tell you, I don't know what the cost is going to be, but it's going to, it is going to take more to run two additional staff.
Okay. What about, rather than a $5,000 cut, would you feel more comfortable with a $2,500 cut?
Yes, sir, I would.
And you think that would help you as far as adding those two additional pieces?
We'll monitor very closely. And if, like I said, if we come, we would not come back to you until this time next year. And this is when there's a lot of training going on in finance and binders and everything you see there. So I mean, that would be the time. But I, I, we'll make it work. I can make it work.
Okay. Any other suggestions, comments?
Well, just-
Mr. Camardi.
And this is the 260 office supplies?
Yes, sir.
So the least amount you've spent, you actually, if I'm, 2012, 2013, is that 5502? What you actually spent this year?
That's through February.
Through February?
That's just February.
No, no, that's what I'm getting at. I just want to hear that, because, once again, the leanest year was $14,817. And-
I've had a lean year at $12,000 on that line item.
She can give you up to the-
Some earlier time? Some earlier time?
Three years ago, I've got $12,000.
No, okay, that, but that's, I don't want you to go back like that, because what you have on the paper in front of us is what I prefer to deal with, because that's another trend. I mean, we could always go back further down the road. But I just want us to be cautious that we, following what Mr. Mayo said, to pick a figure that is too lean, therefore you have to come back for budget amendments. And so as we go down through this, we, I don't want us to negotiate this all, you know, just back and forth, but I don't want to see anything cut too lean for the sake of cutting. And then we have to try to, you know, Mr. Mayo saw the need to bump it back up, and I appreciate his thinking there, because we don't want you to have to come back for too many amendments, which takes a lot of time, and obviously takes time away from IRS productivity.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Camardi. Mr. May.
Yes, I'd like to just recommend to the board that we, that line item 260, that we, from the 17, 669, that we cut that by $2,500 in lieu of $5,000. That's my recommendation.
Okay, well, Mr. Daughtry suggested, sir, Mr. Daughtry?
Mr. Chairman, I concur.
Thank you. Make that note, please. Any other comments, questions? Before we move on, I have one. Under 191, 91, 192.
Yeah.
Professional services on 190, and accounting on 191, and legal on 192. I, if I would like to, I guess, get some clarity, two years ago, it was $45,000 under professional services, and then it went to $53,000, and now you're asking for $94,000, which you have a year-to-date at 47 through February. Could I just go ahead and start with that one, please?
Sure. Okay, I'll go through each one of these. We have what we call an arbitrage calculation on the qualified school construction bonds. That's required by the documents, and we have to have a, that's a calculation on our interest that we're, we are receiving on the amount of funds that we have not spent. And on the radio system and the Gordon buildings, to borrow the money for that, that's $1,000 each. That is protection for you. It is a legal document that I would like to have done on both of those issues, so that it meets IRS regulations. We have the SEs consulting on our insurance. This is our outside insurance consultant, and it's a monthly cost of $650, totaling $7,800. We are going through an insurance renewal next year. That cost is estimated at $9,600, just for the consultant to work on the insurance renewal. We'll be bidding that out. We have a contract for our OPAP, which is our post-employment benefit. That is an annual required by statute, and that is $6,000. We're in the middle of that right now. That is part of your annual audit. We also have a study done on the law enforcement separation allowance. If you'll see in your budget, that's Fund 783. That is required by law, that we have an actuarial study done on those officers that are retired. I'll just kind of read this to you, in case of putting too much to you too fast. Wayne County Minister is a public employee retirement system that provides retirement benefits to the county's qualified sworn law enforcement officers. The county is required by Article 12 D of General Statutes 143 to provide these retirement benefits, and has chosen to fund the amounts necessary to cover the benefits earned by making contributions based on, based on the actuarial valuations. We have a retainer on Davenport, who, we're in the middle of that study right now. That is $33,000 a year. And we did budget for the cost of having them come in at $5,000, in case there is a borrowing or any extra work you do outside of the regular retainer.
Is that under 190?
That's under 190. Now, that one, if you're wanting to cut, you can cut that and come back and put it in. That one, I'll be, you know-
Are we going to, we're using them now. Is that going to be paid out by June 30? Or do you want to take it through?
We do that annually.
Yeah, we have an annual contract with them, and some of the services, like doing the, what we call the Davenport Plan, is inclusive and part of those services. Now, if we do anything on a borrowing, those are additional services.
Have you anticipated that?
Um, no. Well, I think you've got something in here-
I've got $5,000.
Five thousand, but I think you could take that out.
And then you can take it up at the time if you do that.
Exactly.
That one is in there.
Because some of that, Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, with Gordon, but when you do a borrowing, you can then include some of those things as part of services in the borrowing.
Right.
So you could deduct that $5,000, because right now, this is just, from my perspective, manager's perspective, on capital or any financing, I don't see any of that hitting this fiscal year. By the time you do your plan, and if you choose, it would be the next fiscal year before those things would hit.
Right.
So you could take that $5,000 out, I think, fairly comfortably.
We've got about a $40,000 difference there of a trend from 45 to 53, and then we're at 47.9 now through February, but coming up to now is probably 50, 52.
Part of it is the insurance. A big part, I mean, that was not in the current year.
Does the insurance, does the insurance have to be in that particular department, finance, or can that insurance study be in another department?
We can move it to central services. The only reason it's here is because of history. It's been there. So that y'all can, when you're looking back and saying, well, this is what you spent in prior years, your history is following, you know, a trend. When we move it to another department, then you lose your history.
Right.
See what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, if y'all want to move it, it's, we can move it.
Well, I understand. But there are a lot of, there's a lot of moving around, going back to '08, '09, and into the last two years. And looking at what it'll be for the next four.
We have, in bidding out the insurance, when you're bidding that, you have to know the value of your buildings. And we have in here, because of that, an appraisal, and that is at $8,000. We're appraising the buildings. We have in here, the CIP, there's a software system within your budget that you're looking at, and that's some of the stuff we're reading about right over here. That's $3,900 annually. It's called Planet. We run, the department's turned that into Janus during the budget process, and we run it through a Planet system that connects into our JIM software.
Can we, can we cut the professional services under accounting? Is there anything we can do there? That's up about $30,000.
That is, that's a contract. They have a contract with number shared for 2013 at $77,900. But they also do compliance audits, and these are set by the state, and required by the state, at $2,580. I did budget for 20 compliance audits. I would guess that you may only have 17 in there. That would be a good, good estimate. So you could cut it by $2,580 times three, if you want to cut that one. We go back down to 17 compliance audits, if you want to.
The compliance audits are different than special audits that we're asking them to do, i.e. bean payroll?
Yes. This is part of the annual audit. This is the audit that y'all get the book on, you know, and that they come in and present. It's just that the state has, they don't know when, like, right now, they're beginning to get notices from the state. These are compliance audits that you have to audit, so those are required by the state.
Okay. Just make a note, just there. If you can cut any, just make note of that.
Okay, 17. I can, I feel comfortable cutting to 17.
Yes, ma'am.
What was the next one you asked me out?
It was those three, services, accounting, and legal, just professional services. You have, you don't have anything for this year, but you had back in '11 and '12, $49,000. I'm okay for the rest, and they've covered the rest. There's no need of redundancy on the other page. Any other comments on this?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Daughtry.
So my understanding is that we're going to cut line item 190 by $5,000?
Yes, sir. I feel comfortable.
And 191 by $7,500, just around the office?
Yeah, that's, that's rounding.
$7,500.
I'll give you the exact amount. $7,740.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Daughtry. Any other? HR? Human resources? We are going to take a break at 10, for about 10 minutes.
Obviously, you see, we had movement of one of the employees from HR to finance. And just to make a note on, you know, we do some of the training, which is general training. They do the background checks, those type of things. I also want to note one of the larger items, which is a negative. I also want to note one of the larger items, which is a negative, and that is lapped salaries. And I would ask that you keep that in there. Departments don't like it, and I understand that, and there's probably a target on the back of my head, and I understand that. But when you place in lapped salaries, it gives, because July 1st, my plan is to freeze positions, is my plan, except in areas where 24-hour EMS, deputies, that type of thing. And what I will do is, is take every position that comes open on a case-by-case basis. I will actually have a discussion with HR and the department manager, why do you need to fill that job? Is it a maintenance of effort? Is it a production issue? And sometimes we hold positions. I'll say, well, can you hold the position open for 90 days and save me $20,000? Can you? And that's part of that 250. It is basically an incentive for all of us as departments to manage our people better. That's, so I know a couple of you have asked me about that negative, why we have it. I had it at a higher number, and Pam, and I talked to Sue in HR, and I think we all agree, 400 was a little lofty with cutting some of the other that we've done. That 250 was manageable. We've had that somewhere in that $200,000 range. I think the most I ever had was probably 400 many years ago, when our turnover rate was higher, but our turnover rate's very low now. So, other questions about that area? I'm trying, Ms. Guy actually had to go with her husband to, you know, he had eye surgery, and so he had an appointment at 10 o'clock this morning, so I don't believe she was able to make it back, so I will.
Any questions, comments from Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daughtry?
If I'm understanding, since we moved payroll out of Human Resources, there's only a reflection here of the one position delete, that's removed from HR. Am I correct?
For the most part. There may be some other small things, for instance, Pam's picking up some areas of, like you heard her say, copying paper, those are office supplies, so there was an increase there.
Well, I understand, but what I'm saying is, under salary and wages.
That's the big change.
It has been changed. It went from 190 to 157, so I assume that's just one position that was removed. Am I correct?
Yes.
Did the payroll, the person in charge of payroll in that position, did they not have a, an assistant at HR?
The girls, and Louise, Kim, they share in those responsibilities. For instance, I think the largest being Louise, I believe, in looking at the process, assisted with some of the items in payroll, but particularly as it related to benefits. Now, Louise will still be doing that, because there are pieces on benefits that remain with HR, and I think between Finance and HR, myself, we've agreed, those pieces need to stay there, there needs to be separation, so Louise will still.
Well, you can see where I'm going with this, and that is, we did this to make us more efficiently, but basically, we have now acquired a new position.
Yes.
As an assistant to the payroll clerk.
That's correct.
But we left the same positions over in HR.
That's correct.
So undoubtedly, they must have less workload in HR with the same number of employees.
Well, the one thing we're going to be able to do this year is, there are things in HR that we have not been able to do before, as it relates to workers' compensation, health benefits. Those pieces, we have not been able to do on the training side, because Louise was doing some of the backup on payroll that now we'll be able to do.
Well, I'm just concerned that we actually have moved from one department to the other, but yet we still left the same personnel, and I would hope that we would find a way to trim back our cost in HR, since you, I mean, payroll is the major cost that you would be associating with HR payroll, and now that's out of that department entirely, but going further. Office supplies, that has jumped up to 7,000, even though we've got less, because we took the major function out of there, and we're going to $7,000 on a budgeted amount there. History, 3,600 with payroll, 3,600, 4,300, and can you, Pam, tell me what that amount is actually to date? That would be office supplies 260.
4,000.
So it's $4,000, and I'm just saying that I think we need to trim that, and that needs to, I mean, I think we need to trim $2,500 off of that. That would leave $4,500 on that line item. Then we go over to travel mills and lodging. We've got $1,000 budgeted there, and the actual year-to-date's $56. That was as of February, and it was $63, $174, and I'd like to see that reduced by $250, down to 750, and I think that's still high.
Which number is that, Mr. Daughtry?
That is 311, travel mills and lodging. And then we go to rental of the copier. We've got $5,000 in there on rental of the copier, and I'm not, again, remember, we moved payroll out, and instead, we're going from 4,000 to 5,000, so I would like to see that down to, I mean, so far this year, we've got 2,900. What do we got as of today on rental of copy, 431?
Janice, what was the deal on that one? Because that was a, I had a note on that one.
3,800.
We've got 3,800, so I'd like to see that cut by $1,000.
I would say, if you do, I wouldn't go below 1,000.
Okay, and we've got 4,000 on that line item, and the 250, the only problem I have with that, it kind of distorts the cost of that department, because it shows a negative of $12,000 in that department, and so that's the only problem I have.
Wherever I put it, it's going to give it a negative, so just always know, when I look at that department, I go, take 250, you know, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Raycott and Mr. Mayo?
Yes, let's go to 370, Advertising. Put $1,000 in, and actual is $33. I recommend that we cut it, I don't know how much, but, and also on 395, Training, we're looking at $4,000 compared to, what, 1251, and we're one employee less. I just think this is an area that we need to cut some.
Which was that?
370 and 395.
Okay.
And your recommendation on cut on 370? I mean, they spent $33, and we've got $1,000 in.
What's your recommendation?
I recommend you drop it down to, at least to 250.
I believe 500.
500.
Okay.
And the reason being is, because if we do any national searches on any departments, it gets a little expensive. So if you wanted to cut at 5, I'm just saying, because I did have a discussion on this one. And on the Training, on 395, I would be a little cautious on that one, in that we are wanting to step up training, and this is where she will take, when she brings in someone that will speak to a department, let's say, we talked about customer service training, that's where this is going to come out of. We actually pay for it there.
So that automatically, it's Training employees, not HR?
That's right.
Okay, all right, that's where I was.
And I will tell you, we have really fallen short of that in the last couple of years, and we really need to pick that back up.
I agree.
So I would ask that you leave 395 the same, if you could.
Any other, any other comments, questions? Mr. Mayo?
The only other item since payroll has been moved, line item 325 posted, should that not decrease since payroll's been moved out?
Well, you know, we're kind of in a test year. We don't know. Some of it is, you've got to remember, we're doing with the healthcare reform, all the things that we're doing, we're still doing a lot of that work there on the health benefit side. I'm just saying, it's kind of a caution, I don't know. And it's, when you transfer, like in Finance, where Pam says, I don't know, I kind of got to have a history. I don't have that history yet. So I'm not, I know this is, it all adds up. We might be able to do something there, but right now, I'd really like to get a history, because I don't know, you know, because of the healthcare reform, the COBRA stuff, you have to do notifications with employees.
Well, my question was, is that the actual year-to-date, Pam, on line item 325, please?
4,500.
How much?
4,500, 25.
My question is, is that, is a lot of this that we've actually spent directly related to communications on Ceridian, with the issues back and forth, and, you know, overnighting and documents, whatever?
This is just regular work. I would say no.
Okay.
I bet it's less than 10%.
So you, or you're.
If you did anything there, I would say drop 800 out of that 325, and drop it to 3,000.
Okay. I'd like to recommend that, too.
Any others, recommendations or questions? Hold on, just a minute, let's look real close. Any others?
No questions.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
No, 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 329, Other Communications. What was that? It said zeros all the way back to the NLS, $4,000.
What was the, I'm sorry.
329, Other Communications.
329 is, so they're pulling detail on it. Is that cell phone?
Hang on, yes, ma'am.
I don't think it's cell.
Director's iPad.
iPad.
Yeah, that is for 3G, 4G.
Yes, we had it in there, but I think it was actually another line item, but it should be under 329. Yeah, so it's an appropriate amount.
It just wasn't a lot of ones. That was previously under, all the 3G, I T, I just broke it out for most of the departments.
Send it out to departments, it was, so you're going to see, I've got not a lot of those, but you'll see seven or eight of those throughout the budget.
Any others? I have a few. Go back to the last page, 370 in advertising. Can we reduce that to $500 from 1,000? Has that been already?
Yes.
Okay, I just wrote that, okay. Travel mills and lodging, was that reduced to 250 from 1,000?
Yes.
For clarity, I need to run over some things here for my benefit. Under Professional Services, 190, and then you've got 190, 001 Ceridian, and 190, 002 on GIMS. If we start at Professional Services, you have $2,000. We've paid up to 835, and of course, two years ago, it was zero, and then 523. So can we, can we look at that $2,000? Can you indicate to me where that is going, please? That $2,000 on Professional Services?
I'm pulling up the calendar. Do you see anything under it? No, because, see, we pulled some out. Right now, I put a question mark by it, and let me confirm it, because I don't know.
Find out where that $2,000 is going, who it's going to.
Okay.
Okay.
You can do it.
Then you have, two years ago, you had zero under Professional Services Ceridian. Last year, it was $34,000. The budget was amended to 41. It was amended again, 12, 13, 208,000, and then, of course, the actual is 202,000, and this year, zero. My question in there is, we still have an issue with Ceridian. We have a lot of things that are happening that involve Ceridian, but yet, there's a zero there from, from department and from you, whereas, there are some uncertainties. So why is there nothing there for expenses?
Basically.
In reference to Ceridian as under HR?
Because there are no additional expenses needed for Ceridian. We have basically been released from Ceridian. However, they have given us access. In fact, I just asked for access through December, and there will be no additional cost moving forward to have access to the data, because we have data there, and so I've got written confirmation of that.
Okay. Okay, then we go into GIMS, where we've gone back to GIMS under HR, but that, understanding that that GIMS program has moved over to Finance, taken from HR.
I think I was just finding a spot for it last year, and all right.
This is where y'all asked us to trace expenses, and so we just put them in HR this year, so that we can track them all in one spot.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, following back on position vacancies or positions and what are on hold for HR, as one commissioner had mentioned, I think, Mr. Daughtry, the concern is a vacancy that is allocated along with other vacancies of positions that are there, whether they're there for three months, or a year, or even over a year and a half, that we still hold on to those vacancies, and we plug in figures to hold those vacancies, or those positions on that line item. And I guess, for clarity, is that when I look at that 250,000 that you're adding in, even though it has.
A negative.
A negative behind that, you had 400 estimated, and this is the first time it's 250. So I really don't understand, help me just one minute, and I hate to take up the time, but for clarity, are we having positions that are continuing to be open in HR?
Lapped salary is a small time period. We have had in departments where a position, where I consciously have held a position after consulting with Health Director, DSS Director, the Tax Officer, and said, look, can you give me 60 days here? Can you give me, you know, how long can we wait? Is there a legal issue? Why, is there maintenance of effort with DSS? What is it? So I look at it to try and pull by that money, but I'm also looking at, do I need the position? And departments know that, and I'm asking that question. And in years past, we've eliminated positions. You actually are down full-time positions, almost 300 in the past eight years, by 300 full-time positions. You're down. Well, that's part of how we did this. It was, this is a management tool for me to work, not talking about HR, I'm talking about myself as manager with that department, look and say, do I need that position? That's a management tool, bottom line.
All right, okay, understood. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Raycott?
How many employees is in HR?
Three. Kim Wells, Louise Adams, and Sue Guy.
Any others? Mr. Daughtry?
Just one comment there, and, Mr. Smith, I would hope that in holding open positions, that we are not in any way affecting negatively the delivering of services, i.e. example. If we need a plumber over there in facilities, we need a plumber.
What I'm telling you is, is there's always a negotiation that occurs between myself and the department manager. They've got to prove to me that they need it. If they need it, they will tell you. I release them. But if they can't prove it, I don't release them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Case by case.
Any other comments? We're going to do tax now. We have representatives from the Tax Office, so we're going to tax, and then when we finish this one, we'll take a 10-minute break. Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Any specific questions about tax, or anybody seen anything that you had a specific question about? David is here, David Ward, does have a concern. I did cut on.
It is 280, I believe, is it?
280.
It is under 520, capital outlay.
520.
New building collection software.
Yeah, I actually cut 520, and David has a concern that he will actually go through this process this year, and if that's true, he would have to come for a budget amendment. So I think he's coming to you asking for consideration on that, because I did cut it.
Yes, sir, and we are, current building collection, we have, we've been on it about 10 years. It has been, the version we're on, basically, we are sitting there on that, because we didn't want to make any move for anything else.
Uh, we are getting to a point, though, they could come back and say, at most any time, you know, we're no longer going to support you. We're looking at either upgrading what we have, or going with the same vendor that has our Kama package, one of the two. But, right now, we're okay. But if we have to make this move, uh, we're going to need the additional money to purchase that new billing and collection software, get it in place, get it going. So, that's what I wanted, Mr. Smith, and y'all to understand, if we have to make a move, then I may come back to you and say, we've got to have this additional money.
Mr. Mayor?
David, do you, are you requesting the, uh, the two eighty?
Yes, sir, that's what we request.
Okay, is that, is that realistic? Is that what you?
That, that is, I think that is, well, I'd say that's worst-case scenario, as best we can estimate it. Um, but as far as cutting that back some, it's an unknown, really. Um, so, if we're going to cut it back some from that, I, I would be conservative on doing that.
Any other questions? Mr. Donery?
Can we live with this one forty, five hundred, and if, you, you're right, it is an unknown. But if you get into a situation where you're going to have to upgrade, I mean, a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar, uh, that, that's a major expense.
It is.
And what I would hope that we could do is work through this, uh, fiscal year, the one forty, and hopefully, you can time that in such a way that the, if you are going with the additional one forty, that it would flow into the following year. So you would spread it over two budget cycles rather than one.
Right.
I mean, is that possible?
Uh, it's possible, again, as long as we have support moving forward, I think we're going to be okay. But, as I say, you know, that could go away at any time, so I'm just, again, we're sort of bracing for worst-case scenario here.
And in the worst-case scenario, you, if you lose support, got to do it, then you could come back to us and request the additional. But, you know, if our, if our game plan would be more or less from the standpoint of spreading it over two cycles, I mean?
If, if we can, if we can make that work, yes.
And that's part of what we'd have to negotiate with the company. We've done that in some years before, we said to a company, okay, look, we've got a purchase order for a total amount of X. I'll put in dollars in this budget in the next year, and you kind of spread it out, if you will. But, it's a chance, it's always, it's a gamble, and, and we know that, but, and we may have to come back.
If he signs a contract saving the two eighty, you'll have to have two eighty.
Yes.
Understand.
Because of that.
And we'd have to amend it.
Go along with the contract, which will encumber that money.
Understand.
We can't legally sign the contract unless the money is there.
Okay, that brings up a good point, if you'll pardon me for interrupting you, just because you brought that up. The budget amendment, two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred, when was that budget amendment made, twelve, thirteen? And if it was, is it encumbered?
I think that's an original budget, I would say.
Original, the original budget you had in two thousand and ten, eleven, two years ago, you didn't have anything. There was nothing for eleven, twelve.
Let me go.
And then in eleven, twelve, uh, you had not anything, and then there was a budget amendment of two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred, thirteen.
But actual is zero.
Actual doesn't matter, there's a budget, there's a budget amendment here indicated in twelve, thirteen. I know that there's not any been spent up until this amount, but if, in fact, you had a budget amendment within this year, you could have restricted and encumbered it. That's my question.
It was in the original budget.
It was in the original.
No, amended, on this form, amended is the budget as of February twenty-eighth. It would be the original plus any amendment.
Yes.
That doesn't mean just amendments that happened, that means it could be original or off.
Original plus the additions or changes.
I understand, but you have?
Nothing's been.
You have lived?
It was in our budget last year.
Right, but again, here that you've given us, you've got original budget underneath, actual and budget. And then you come over and put amended budget, two forty-three, one hundred. I just want to know why, if it was encumbered, if, if it was a budget amendment made.
There was no budget amendment made.
Okay.
To increase it. Nothing's been.
All right. If I could, Mr. Donery?
Mr. Ward, as I'm understanding, you must have requested this last year?
Correct.
To the tune of two hundred and forty-three thousand. Can I ask why you increased that to two eighty this time? I mean, that's?
Yes, sir, we, we have actually done some pricing with the current software we're on, as far as an upgrade, and done some pricing with our Kama vendor, and to cover all of our bases, to get everything in place, up and going, uh, we wanted to be sure we were covered there. That's why we increased that. One piece of the billing and collections is linked in with Finance. In other words, everything we're doing on a daily basis, we had to have them write a piece to actually have all of that upload overnight into the Finance system, so Pam can track all that. That is an additional piece that you would have to do again for whatever new we go with.
Well, we certainly would want to, uh, help you in any way you can in order to bring the revenue in. Uh, but I, you know, I, I would ask, uh, that we leave that at the one forty, and if you need something additional in the year, that you come back with a budget amendment.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Page, and Mr. Mayor?
As the vendor, current vendor of the company you're working with, have they given you a date, and they're going, they're no longer supporting it, or?
No, no, they're not.
Are they getting attention, that we're going to drop it out this year?
No, they, they've basically upgraded the billing and collection package. Uh, we're on version two, to give you an example, and they've upgraded to four-point something. Uh, we in one of the county have decided not to move up to those versions, simply because, again, if we stay with this, with these folks, then we'll be moving up to those, which would be expensive. If we go with our Kama vendor to try and have one comprehensive package, then you're going to have to pay for that.
I mean, this is what we're driving there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, what I'm looking at is the one forty-five hundred, and what you're asking for of two eighty-five hundred, uh, we're looking at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars difference. What I would recommend, what, what I would recommend is that we, we put back in the budget the original two forty-three, one hundred, and if you need additional, an additional budget amendment in the future to get up to two eighty, we're only looking at forty thousand.
That's correct.
Uh, and that, that would be my recommendation on this line item. I'd rather submit, see a smaller budget amendment come before the commissioners than to see a, a large one. That's, that's my recommendation, Chairman.
Any other comments, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I, I've got to respectfully disagree here, and, and which why? Uh, one, the two forty-three was in this year's budget for last year, and actually, we didn't spend any of it.
Right.
So I, I would hate to put that back in there, when in fact, uh, you know, we can actually possibly get by. I'd rather err on the, the side of not spending those dollars unless it's required. Um, I mean, I, I, I'll meet him halfway with the one forty, as the county manager recommended, but I'd hate to put the whole two forty-three back in there. Because we went a whole year without having spent.
Yes.
Well, but, but, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Page?
Yeah, there's a possibility, though, that we're getting closer and closer according to David, to have to spend this money. And again, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to express my concern, is that if we bombard it with budget amendments, next year's budget's going to be way out of kilter. Uh, so that's why I'm saying, if the two forty-three, if we leave it in there, then we're going to have a smaller budget amendment. Now, what, let me ask you this, David. Are you, are you saying, are you saying you're going to use some of this money this year, or can you tell me that you are going to use it?
I cannot tell you that definitely. What I'm saying is, is a good possibility we will have to use that.
Well, what determines that?
What determines that is if our support goes away, because we can't survive without that. And because we're on an older version, and have not upgraded to anything new, in other words, they're still supporting us right now, but at any time, they could pull the plug on that and say, you know, we're no longer supporting older versions.
Okay.
So far, so good, and we may be able to make it through. But I just, I tend to, you know, go with the, go with the side of caution.
Okay.
Try to be prepared.
Mr. Chairman, I still stand by my recommendation of keeping it two forty-three.
Okay. Mr. Carmody?
Uh, I would like to, rather support what Mr. Mayor says, uh, if it was, we know that, it looks like down the road, it's going to be needed. And if we have it in the budget, then what I understand is, is you just would have to do a purchase order for it, and then we move on. But if we have it in that budget, that money's not going to go into place, it's going to be sitting there waiting. And wherever you have it waiting, it's going to be waiting. And let's make sure that we don't create a lag in what our services can be, simply by where we have it at. It's, obviously, we're not going to go haphazardly spend it someplace, it's going to be spent for that if it's spent. So let's give the department the leeway to have it sitting there so that the Finance Department can receive a purchase order and move on with that. That's why you project, you put something in there, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's, to me, is, is, is a sound way to go with this. Is to have it sitting there in place, waiting, ready to go. Purchases need to do it, go ahead with the upgrade, and we don't leave anything in the process. Because you would be called back here and asked, uh, if something didn't work, why didn't it work? And we don't want to be a part of it not working simply because of where we had the dollars sitting there.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
If we're going to add that money back in there, I'd like to say is go ahead and move forward and, and get the upgraded package. If we're not going to do that, then I think we need it legally as it is. We're going to put it in there, let's go ahead and get it.
Okay.
Because it's going to increase your efficiency, I'm sure, in the long run, save money.
We hope to, yes, sir.
So, that's the way I stand it. If we're going to put it in there, then we need to go ahead and move on with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Donery? I concur with Mr. Page. Uh, if in fact, we're going to put these dollars in here, then I think we need to commit, go ahead and, and upgrade it, and be done with it, rather than just carrying it over from one year to the next. Uh, if we're not, if it's just a matter of that we are anticipating maybe, possibly, is my concern about putting in the, the additional. Uh, so it, it should either be required that we do it, and put the money in there, and do it, or plan to do it over two fiscal years, half this year, half the next year.
Yeah, and one thing we were trying to get, uh, beyond is, as all of y'all know, the billing and collections, I mean, the collections of motor V license vehicles is changing, whereby the state's going to be doing the collecting portion of that. Uh, it was scheduled to go on for next month, and it got delayed because of, you know, car dealer, uh, systems they had to upgrade. Uh, so now, it's scheduled for September. Don't anticipate that changing, but if it does, in other words, we were trying to get beyond when that happens, simply because of what, what it, you know, what our system has to do for that. So that's why we're trying to do that.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a, it's been a wait and see, I mean, that stuff was passed in oh-five, and, you know?
But again?
They were going to put it in place in oh-nine, and, you know, it's changed several times.
But the company has not indicated to you that they're going to end support.
Not at this time.
We're just saying that it may happen.
Right, not, not at this time it happened, but it has happened.
And certainly, if they want to sell you the additional new software package, I think they would be somewhat flexible in regards to the implementation. I mean, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars is a pretty, uh, a nice contract to be awarded.
And I think they would be, you know, and of course, there's always a possibility that we go with another vendor.
Sure.
So, you know?
Sure. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Donery, I, I, I agree with you, but at the same time, I'd rather see the money in the budget from one year to the next, rather than, than David having to spend the money sooner. In other words, if the system is working, we need to get as much out of the system as we can before we spend money for a new one, which is going to cost to have another warranty program, all these maintenance issues are going to come up per year when you switch over to a new one. I'd rather see it carried over for the next three years, if we can, and see it in the budget, than for him to spend the money prematurely and change in that system. And that, that's my own comment, that's my own concern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any others? Mr. Raycoff?
Yes, sir. Uh, if is the longest word in the dictionary.
What's that?
If is the longest word in the dictionary. Oh, and we've had this in the budget, oh. Certainly, I want to work with David and his department, oh, but management has made a recommendation of a hundred and forty-five hundred. Hundred and forty thousand, five hundred dollars. Oh, and I'm not, I'm disagreeing with the other commissioners, but, uh, my feeling is, is that we need to go with what management has advised and move on with this. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you, any others?
Just one more question.
Mr. Page?
It's not on that item, and I know we talked about this at some point, lockbox services, what is that?
That is, uh, when payments are, are made, people send them into a lockbox, a, a, basically, a pill box in Charlotte when they're making tax payments. It goes in there, they take whatever they get in today, they process that night, it's uploaded back to our bank usually by the next day. That's what that is.
So we've gone to zero on that, though, that's?
Well, well, on that, uh, Pam?
We had spoken this year, so we took it down.
Right.
Okay. I knew we talked about it in one meeting, I can remember, maybe it was in?
It's very efficient, but we've not spent, but it's a very efficient service, helps us collect money a lot quicker.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Donery? I know, we got hung up on a hundred and something thousand, but anyway, let me go through these others. On one ninety, professional services?
Yes, sir.
Um, the actual was twenty-eight, seven, ten. What have we spent so far this year on that, that item?
What have we spent on that, Pam?
That's one ninety?
Oh, thirty-seven thousand.
Why would we jump that to a hundred and fifteen thousand?
Well, again, just anticipating, uh, anything billing in the collections, the tax project, and anything existing that we might try to do. Also, the Kama enhancements, if we have to do something with our Kama package to upgrade or enhance that. Uh, the reserve pool billing and collection is, goes along with the billing and collection system we have now. That's actually owned by the county commissioners, or I say it's owned by them, it's, it's.
But you see, that's a major increase. I mean, we're, we're all, we're more than doubling that, and I, I would ask, is there any place in there that you feel like that we could trim that line item on one ninety, uh, in this particular budget, that you feel comfortable with? Because that, that is a major increase there, you know? Your history shows forty-four thousand, forty-two thousand, and you're saying so far this year, we spent thirty-seven, and now we're going to jump it up to a hundred and fifteen thousand, that's a?
And actually, in budgeting over the years, we've actually dropped down, I think ten, eleven, we had one fifty-six there. Last two years, we had one, we budgeted one oh-five, one hundred. But I understand what you're saying, no more than we've spent so far this year.
Yeah, we're trying to bring that budget expenditure down, and even though we budgeted in the past, if you didn't spend it, you must not need it. So we're just saying, can, can that figure be more accurately reflected in what we're actually spending?
Well, we have a certain things that we definitely have to pay for if something unexpected happens, and again, I may be coming back to you.
And, and that's fine, but, but that's dramatically, I, I just, in other words, the difference between the budget amount and actual spends is just too big of a difference there. We need to trim that down, and we need to be more accurately to what we're actually spending. We're spending somewhere around forty-five thousand. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I would recommend that we reduce that down to fifty thousand, because three years' history shows that it's been less than fifty thousand dollars.
Please note that. Any, any discussion on that particular line item?
That, that particular line item?
On that, on that particular line, from other commissioners. Mr. Carmody?
I would only like to ask if there's any relationship between the possible need for the larger budget there and the possible need that we would have to go to a new system? I mean, is, is professional services and training, any, any connecting the dots that?
Anything in our current systems, we try to have money available if we have to do any kind of upgrade, any kind of change, anything like that. And that's what we're preparing for a lot of those items in one ninety. The, the vehicle valuation service is just that, it's value our vehicles. Accurant, we utilize that in trying to, uh, determine information, uh, for folks when we're trying to garnish or attach accounts, et cetera. Uh, the legal. The legal services foreclosures is just for that. Vessel is for actual watercraft pricing. Marshall and Swift is something we get. It's actually, they do, they give us numbers, update them for real estate.
I guess my point is that I just will not want things that are related to some larger goal to be cut, and then productivity is undercut because you didn't have money in there to do the things you need. That's just a general comment without... I just overcut. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carmody. Any other comments?
Going to 251.
Mr. Daughery?
Here again, we've got actual 3320, $3,097. This year, $3,051. So on average, we're running less than $4,000 in each one of those years on vehicles, gas, oil, and yet we're budgeting $10,000. And I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we reduce that by $5,000 and have that budget at $5,000, which is in excess of what they have been using over the last three years.
Make note of that. Staff, note of that.
Going to office supplies?
Any discussions on these, other commissioners, if you have any comments, please let me know. Mr. Daughery?
Then I'll go to office supplies, 260, 16,5, 16,4. This year, actual was $10,988. And so far this year...
$17,500.
How much?
$17,500.
Whoa, $17,500. And we're budgeting 20,500. Just leave it?
I think you're going to, if you look at this last month, I think you're going to be caught.
All right, we're going to leave that one. Let's move to 261. Office supplies, non-capital furniture, 947, 896, 1758, and year to date...
1758.
1758, and yet we're budgeting 4,000. And I'd like to reduce that down by 2,000 to where we're leaving our 2,000 item, $2,000.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor? On that line item?
On that line item, I'm recommending, Mr. Daughery, that we move that to, we leave it at 2,500. We're cutting a little bit too close as far as money.
All right. I concur with that.
Please make note of that. Any others?
So that line item is going to be at $2,500.
And professional services, too, above that, you've cut that $50,000 from 116.
That's correct.
Make note of that.
You've cut it how much?
$50,000.
We went from $115,000 to $50,000 on the professional services, 190.
Then we're going to go to 262, non-capital computer equipment, 0707. This year, saying zero, how much have we spent on 262?
Zero.
Zero. And we've got a $4,400 budget there.
Right. And reason for that, that one is, we're looking at 260, let's see.
262.
262. That is where we are looking at purchasing some iPads for our field appraisers to go out into.
I would recommend you leave that the same because we are trying to let them remote into the office. We've never been able to do that.
Yeah. But, I mean, we're still using basically a clipboard and taking the card copy cards out when you're measuring or listing.
And how many iPads would that be?
Two, is what we've asked for.
And that's their estimated cost?
Yes.
For two iPads, $4,400?
Yeah.
$4,400?
No.
Well, no, no, let's see. We're showing, I'm sorry, four, at 1,100 each.
That's what I thought. I was sitting here, I thought I had four. I was thinking, oh, maybe that's an iPad Plus, but I think it's four.
Okay, I'm going to move on. Item 311, travel mills and lodging, 62, 46, 42, and this year?
68.
68.
They just got back from some schools, so you've got some bills coming in.
All right, we're going to leave it then.
Particularly if you do go with these other software, you're going to have some training coming for the employees.
All right, we go to training, which is 395, 1630, 2750, 2635, and this year?
2,600.
2,600. And we got 6,300 in there, so I would ask that we reduce that by $2,000.
Which one is that?
That would be 395, and that will leave an amount of 4,360, which is almost double what we spent this year. I mean, still could be trimmed more, really.
Mr. Page?
Were you anticipating additional training if you got that other software? Is that why this line was...
Well, it's, we try to anticipate every year for training, conferences, different things we attend and go to, and we try to anticipate that as best we can. And yet, if we do go to new software, obviously, we're going to have some training.
I guess what we've got to advise is I recommend doing a budget then at that time if you ask for a lot of money, and then just play that at the same time, and then you cut this back like Mr. Daughery was talking about. That's all, Mr. Page? Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Mr. Page is asking my question.
So, we're in agreement of cutting it to 4,360, which this year they spent 2,600 now. So you're almost doubling it.
Yep.
And then the last one, again, we want to have real listed estimates in regards to spending, and this is where this, on 440, 001, you've got $40 you spent, $40, $100, and yet we've got $1,500 in that budget line item. And, you know, I would ask that we reduce that by $1,000 and leave 500 in that.
And keep in mind, that is our debt set off program, which works very well. And that is whereby we'll actually submit delinquent taxes to a service that uploads them to the state of North Carolina. And if anybody's getting an income tax refund, or if they've actually won over $600 with the lottery, and we or any other county has something out there, they pull that money out and send it to us.
Valuable service, no doubt. But what I'm saying is, we've only spent 40, 40, and $100. So I don't see any reason to have 1,500 in the budget for that. 500, which is five times what we spent this year, should be enough.
Okay, again, we're just trying to cover.
I understand you, I understand.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I didn't, I heard a few comments from Mr. Smith, but do you have any issues with what we're just, do you have any comments on...
It's kind of like debt set off. It is an absolute guess, because if we go out there and we're able to capture, you know, that's going to go up because there's a fee attached to it, and then we'd have to amend that at the time. You know, if I can go capture, we've had years where we've had $100, $200,000, you know. And if that's the case, and there would be fees attached, then we'd have to amend that at the time. But I look at what I'm able to capture versus having to amend for, a few dollars versus $2,000 or something. So you just amended it to be a small amount.
David, is any of these items which suggested in your budget, give you any heartburn in any way?
Well...
Any of them?
Some of them give me a little concern. I understand where you're coming from and the entire board, and you wanting to cut wherever you can cut, I understand that. And again, you know, when we budget, we try to sort of be on the conservative side, and we're doing it to an extent. But we want to be sure we feel like we're covered on anything we may need.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We spent a considerable amount of time on this one particular department, so just to make sure that we get a consensus as how we afford on this particular department. There's been a lot of nugs taking by staff, finance, and we want to make sure we're clear on this as we go forward into our next meeting or work session before the day is out. If the staff wants to total that up and get it back to us before we conclude our meeting today, Mr. Ward, I wouldn't expect you to have to stay here all day for that, but...
Finance does not know what to do on the 520.
The capital outweigh on computers. We've had suggestions that we stay at 140. We've had recommendations that we stay at 280. Could I, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Daughery?
Mr. Ward? Could I possibly have you contact our software company and ask them whether or not they are intending at this point to provide us support services for the next fiscal year?
Yes.
I think that makes the difference, really. If they are going to drop it, then we need to go ahead and address it. But I think we need some input of what the intentions of the software company is.
I was just asking Mr. Ward to stay on top of that. With the commissioners that have questioned today, Mr. Page, of course, wanting to know if we need to go ahead and act on it. Mr. Daughery, Mr. Mayo, I'd like to keep it in the budget. So if you'll just make sure that, coordinate that with Mr. Smith, and that we get some finality on this in the next seven to 10 days. Can you do that, can you get some answers from...
Should be able to, yes. I think we may have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry, sir. The software that they're referring to, NCPTS 2.0, there's only two counties in North Carolina that are using it right now. NCPTS 2.0 is hardcoded for Internet Explorer 6.0. What that means to us, for the IT department and for the tax department, is that Microsoft no longer supports that. And the reason why they don't, we were just forced to migrate over to Server 2008. Server 2008 does not work with Internet Explorer 6. So we, there's a couple of problems there. One, there's no longer any support for Internet Explorer 6 for that version. Two, IT department cannot virtualize them because of that. Three, there's a third one, NCPTS 2.0 requires a tax administrator. Even if you go to the 4.0 version, it's still going to require one of my people to be a tax expert and to be a tax database administrator. It's going to still require that position to do full-time duties. The alternative system, which is with a system, a company called Bitex, is a system that we're using right now for KAMA. It's our online web-based system. That's the system that we are also looking at to migrating over to because it will require far less interaction from the IT department and give them more capabilities from a tax perspective that could actually reduce overall costs and almost potentially eliminate a position.
Yep.
So there's a lot of other things involved with this decision besides just contacting the vendor and upgrading the software. It's much more complicated than that because it affects so many other things.
But... Excuse me, Mr. Ward, I'll let you keep your thought. So what you just said is that, is it important in order for you to do what the county has planned as far as virtualization, as far as interfacing all of our departments with what you're doing? Then are you saying, then, we should go ahead and take care of this, purchase it, and move on like one of the commissioners had mentioned earlier?
If we upgraded to 4.0, that would alleviate the virtualization piece. We would be able to virtualize them because it is using a higher version of Internet Explorer. I think it's IE8, which is what the county's currently using. But there are other issues. If we stay with NCPTS, then it's going to require me, and this is something that will have to be discussed on the side, our database administrator right now, our tax programmer, Keith Goff, is getting close to retirement, and he's got very critical skills that are very difficult to find. He knows all the tax laws, he knows all the database systems, he knows all the tax systems, I mean intimately, and he is critical to the daily operation of the tax office. So the discussion for IT and the tax office is to migrate away from NCPTS to this other system that require far less interaction between the IT department and tax and give them more ability to do things without requiring the IT department to do them. Which, in other words, I may still need a position, but the skill sets, I would not have to hire somebody with that high level of skill set. So there's a lot of things that need to be...
Is that the position you're speaking of possibly eliminating would be?
Not eliminating, but possibly reclassifying that position to a different position, a lower position.
Okay. Mr. Ward?
And what Steve's saying is correct on the Internet Explorer 6 moving up to 8. However, we, one reason, again, we're trying to get through the change up for the vehicle stuff, vehicle change. And also, even with the current KAMA system we've got, which he's speaking of, the billing and collection side of it, at this point, we would probably lose some functionality of what we have now with the NCPTS system, which we're not willing to lose because I think that will hurt our collection rate, et cetera. And so we have several things we've got to look at. And if the new piece, the KAMA software, could be upgraded to give us all the functionality we have now, we would do that. And plus, I agree, they may not have to have somebody with the skill set of Mr. Goff, but everybody we know that is on this software, the counties, they have an IT person of some sort in the tax department that works for them.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Okay. How do you want to proceed then, before we adjourn with the tax department?
Can, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have a couple of things. Could I go over those, or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One other, we did ask for some merit increases for some employees. Two of them, we basically, we had a longtime person retire back December 1st, and rather than fill that position, we have taken a lot of the duties she had and spread them between two other employees. And because of that, and also the fact that they've taken fundamentals of collection, one of the courses recommended through School of Government, passed it, we've asked for two-step increases for each of those folks. Other one, two other ones is, we moved the mapping back into under tax. We actually hired an employee, I actually robbed Connie, unfortunately, but we moved an employee in there. They spent a lot of time and effort, the person that was in there and the new person there, getting up to speed on that. I think it's paying off where we are as far as behind the register of deeds, getting property, getting it transferred, et cetera. So for both of those employees, we asked for a one-step merit. And would appreciate y'all considering that because you're looking at a cost probably roughly for the two that have taken on the collection duties of about $2,700. And on the other, you're looking at probably about $1,800. And we had a $30,000 employee that retired. We would ask that you give serious consideration to that.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Mr. Acoff?
You, 30, can you do a little more? I believe 34, 34, 35,000, something like that.
Mid-30s.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And one other question?
Mr. Carmody?
Is that $2,700 each, or $2,700 together?
That's together.
That was total?
That was total. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. And what's the, what would you like to do on this before we... Is that all the information you wanted to give us, Mr. Page?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor?
Let's put this line item, 520, let's go ahead and put this to bed. I recommend to the commission board that we install in the new budget, the original from last year of 243,100. And that will allow us that if there is a budget amendment, it would be much smaller than it would if we leave it at the 14500. So I'm recommending that we go back to the original 2012, 2013 budget of 243,100. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Daughery?
I will concur with that if we go ahead and acquire it. In other words, let's go ahead and get it job done. I mean, it's out of date. We're going to have to do it at some point, so if we're going to budget it, let's do it.
Or split it in two years, but we're talking about one of those two scenarios, right?
Yes, that's good.
Well, we need to look forward on that.
Well, we need to go forward on that, especially after you told us what you're going to do.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clardy.
One little piece in there. Please make sure, I agree that you need to move up, but please get all your data that you need from those counties that's already using, as much history as you can. Move expeditiously, carefully, because we would not want to have come in to face us, we switched to a new computer system and it blew up in our face, that's all I'm saying. But do all the research again before we leave that one that we're riding right now. That's all I say.
This is something that we've talked about over the last several years, and we have been planning.
Need to stand, you need to come up here, because we're streaming.
I'm sorry, sir. Yeah, this is just, it's something that David and I have discussed on multiple occasions. It's not something that we want to just jump right into, because there's a lot of complications. Again, we don't want it to blow up in our face and have running into process issues or program issues or lose revenue or anything like that. So, whatever system we decide to go to, whether it's NCPTS four point O or the new CAMA system, not the CAMA system, but the new Bitex system, it has, we have to be very careful about making sure that we're doing things carefully, so we don't have it blow up in our face. So, we understand it needs to be done, but there are some processes with the vehicle tax and stuff like that, that we want to get that out of the way before we proceed.
We have a timing issue also.
We have a timing issue also when we can do this, because we have certain processes that start in January, go right through December, and we only have really one good window to try and move software, switch software. Okay, so you've got to be careful there. So, timing is very important on that.
All right, let's sort of, hold on one second. Being that you just brought that up, a timing issue, I've just heard the recommendations. Mr. Smith, can I get some feedback, please? Or can the board get some feedback on your concerns here, what you've heard?
Well, we know over the next, what, next week, we've got some staff actually talking with Bitex and looking at a couple of things. First of all, is Bitex ready? Because there are these conversions going across the state. Then you've got the mix of, go over all this again, then you've got the new taxation on DMV taxes on vehicles, incorporating all that in. But then we have to look at those very narrow windows of opportunity, when you can install, because we do not want to be doing it when we're in the middle of listing, or you've got to find those, and it's usually that summer, some part of the fall and part of the spring, there are these little short windows, and you've got to time it. And if you miss one, bam, it moved, and that's been part of the problem. I remember billing years ago, or CAMA years ago, was it put us off two years because we can never hit the window of time because of other processes that stretched out. I think if you put in that two forty-three, I still think it's until we, you know, the next few days, we'll know more by next week, and then we can alter it. And Bitex may come back and say, you know what, we're not going to be ready at all. And if so, take the whole thing out. If they say, you know what, we're going to be able to hit it at this date, a little bit of a gamble, then you might want to put the two forty-three. But I say, let's get this meeting behind us, we'll know more right after the hearing about what we're up with then.
All right. Okay. With that said, I was thinking at the time to go ahead and allow for a motion, but being that the timing part now is, and you're still unsure, then the recommendation, am I hearing, I'm hearing of a time of implementing it, if you acquire the funds, the funds would be what's budgeted of two forty-three. There is a hundred, and you've doubled it from two eighty down to a hundred and forty for the recommendation of the manager versus what the department wants. So, with that, of what we've heard, can we take the recommendation and table this sort of project in this department and give us seven to ten days, what we spoke about fifteen minutes ago, and not make a motion on it or not pull the trigger on this right now? Can I get a consensus from the board?
Yep.
Okay, so the recommendation would be for what we just talked about, get together on that. Okay, let's...